Executive session since six o'clock to discuss a personnel matter, a legal matter, a student matter, and a contractual matter. Who could please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance, please be flagged. United States of America and due Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, in whose civil liberty is just as strong. Introductions.
Dave Hurst.
Catherine Maddow.
Lauren Crossall.
Robert Tejin.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Dellenbaum.
Ewan McNamee.
John Walston.
John McPhillips.
Do we have any PIG or SUPA students visiting tonight? Welcome, thanks for coming. You need to stay until the meeting is over or nine o'clock, whichever one of those things comes first. Before you leave, make sure you sign out on one of the sign out sheets that's up here on the table, that way you get credit for being here. First up is our approval of minutes. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the February 5th, 2025, regular board meeting.
So moved for second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries item three, meeting reports, and first up is our superintendent's report.
Sure, thanks so much. So I have a few announcements. I wanted to share, if you didn't see this, that News 10 visited the high school. Prior to vacation, they visited the help desk at the high school, and they were featured on News 10's broadcast on February 10th. There's a short little news story on them, sharing how this innovative internship program has established an enhanced technology workforce that supports teaching and learning. So there is a link on our website, it's a great little feature. We'd also like to congratulate one of our middle school students, Arnaud Jacobusetti. Arnaud won the middle school spelling bee back in January, then advanced to a regional qualifier that was held over the break. He performed so well on an online test, he is moving on to the regionals of the Scripps National Spelling Bee this Saturday, March 1st, and he is one of only 17 students who will compete in the regional bee. So top finishers on Saturday will head to the national spelling bee, so we'd like to wish him luck. I'd also like to thank our food services director, Claire Burdine, and our staff, who are trying this year take home breakfast and lunch for students who are fasting in observance of Ramadan. The take home meals will be available during the school weeks throughout Ramadan, and there's a Google form that families can fill out in advance. All meals are vegetarian, will be either charged to student school meal accounts or free for any students who are eligible for free or reduced price meals. So I'd like to thank our staff for offering that. And finally, my last announcement, or plea perhaps, is in kindergarten registration. We have a projected number of K's, thinking K for 270-ish students, and as of last count, I think we had about 140 register. And the deadline to guarantee registration in your home school is March 1st. So we have sent out reminders. Last year, we did look back at this time, we were only about 40 students off our projected numbers, so it's a real significant change, so I'm not really sure what's going on. So if you know anyone who has an incoming K student, or get the message out, please have them register sooner rather than later, because that does help with our enrollment, obviously how many class sections we need at each of our buildings, and that also plays a factor in our budget process, so I guess that's a plea more than announcement.
Have we done direct outreach to the preschools in the area?
Yes, we've done that. I know the preschools have sent out information, our buildings have sent out information, if you have a sibling potentially that's coming, you know, you have another student coming in, and we've sent district-wide communication, so it's an odd situation, so.
Yeah, I guess if you think of any other way to get brainstorm, there's another way to get them to reach out.
Thank you. Yep, and that's everything, the superintendent's report.
Any questions for Jody on that? Next up is the board report, and I don't have a lot, just coming off of vacation. I do know that the high school is hosting a hygiene drive right now, so if you want to send anything in or stop by, I know there's information that went out, I think on Parent Square about that. Anybody have anything else that they want to share? Anybody here from High School Student Senate? Come on up.
Should I just like?
I think if you pull it down.
Just pull it down.
Or jump up.
Or just.
Or just take it out.
I'll just, oh, take it out? Okay, you know what, I'll just go like this. Oh, okay. Hello, I'm Lauren, I'm the president of Student Senate. So I have a couple of things. I'm sure you all know that our dance was canceled or postponed for the winter dance, so we've moved that to March 22nd, and we're renaming it the Spring Fling, because it's like a couple of days after spring equinox. And then we've also secured a $5,000 donation for the backpack program from the Bethlehem Community Fund. And then a couple of things that Mr. Irons wanted me to let you guys know, was the boys' basketball team is going to semifinals. Their game is on Saturday at Hudson Valley against Amsterdam. Girls, that's me, going to quarterfinals on Friday against Boston Spa in Mechanicville. And Charlie Icke is going to Girls Wrestling States tomorrow, so yeah, as a sophomore, which is great, but yeah, that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is our, we don't have anyone here from the middle school? I didn't see anybody, but just off the check. Next is our presentation. This evening, we have our first big budget presentation. We are going to have our budget overview, and then talk about transportation, technology, and operations and maintenance. So we'll start off with John.
Good evening to the board and our friends and family at home. The meeting tonight's really the introduction to the school district's 25-26 proposed budget for the upcoming school year. Customarily, when I'm up here presenting in late February, I really usually have a good sense of where the district stands in terms of finances and expenditures, what the maximum allowable tax levy is, what the percentage tax increase will be, where we are on key revenue streams and expenditures. This year's budget process has been a lot more organic and dynamic for a number of reasons. Much of what I will present today is still in draft form. I anticipate that when we get to next week's meeting, the numbers will firm up, and I'll get into a little bit more explanation in terms of why we're not on as solid a foundation at this meeting as we are in previous budget cycles. The school district's budget is broken up into various pots of revenue. School taxes account for just under 66%, and those, the school taxes are subject to the tax cap calculations as defined by the New York State Property Tax Cap Law. The inflation index for the upcoming school year is actually two, almost 3%, but that factor is capped at 2% under the tax cap law, meaning that the district has to make up the difference in that inflation index. The maximum increase under the law, as it stands currently tonight, is at roughly 5.8%, which could yield just under $4.3 million in additional tax revenue. When I say the maximum increase, that means the tax increase the district could propose to voters without needing an override to that tax cap and tax levy proposal. State aid is at roughly 31%. You remember last year, there was a question in terms of what foundation aid would look like in the future, given the governor's proposal to ask the Rockefeller Institute to sort of recalculate, re-engineer the way state aid is both calculated and distributed to school districts throughout the state. The Rockefeller Institute did meet over the course of the summer into the late fall. The governor did incorporate some of the recommendations into the reallocation of the state aid formula. One of the provisions that came out of that was a maintaining of the hold harmless provision, and by hold harmless, all districts received at least a 2% increase in their foundation aid. Certain other districts made out more, depending upon the factors that get added into the foundation aid formula, but Bethlehem at least maintained its 2% increase, which translates to roughly $385,000 in additional foundation aid. The district's universal pre-K allocation remained at $1.3 million. That's not actually incorporated into the general fund budget we're discussing tonight, it's actually in the F fund budget, but that was an important carryover from one budget year to the next. Other state aid streams were relatively flat comparatively, some up, some down, but overall relatively consistent. Pilots and miscellaneous sources of revenue account for the remaining 3.5%. The budget that I'm presenting today reflects the actual loss of the PSEG pilot that we have been talking about over the past several cycles, that is a loss of $3.5 million, as well as the phase out of other pilots associated with the Vista Tech Park. These are the initial state estimate, state aid estimates, broken by some of the larger categories, comparing the 24-25 budget, what the current 24-25 state aid run, based on the most recent data the district has entered into state ed, as well as the executive proposal submitted by the governor earlier this month. You can see that there is some increased revenue. I do want to highlight that the total is a little bit inflated, only because of the universal pre-K allocation. That $195,000 represents the actual grant dollars we applied for, compared to the actual allocation that we're eligible for. So last year, we were also eligible for the $1,269, but what we ultimately submitted in terms of our application, based on our partner with T S Kids Crew and TSL Adventures, was $195,000. So that difference is just a little bit artificial, I just wanted to highlight that out. The one asterisk I want to highlight is on our building aid. That represents the current building aid in the executive proposal and the current state aid run. It does not reflect the additional building aid associated with our 2021 capital project. Nick and Sonia did his darnedest really to close out that project, as requested as of December 31st, to get all of our paperwork into state ed, so state aid could flow in 24-25 into 25-26. So we anticipate anywhere from another $2.3, $2.4 million coming on to that total later on. So next year, he'll be presenting later. It was a huge lift to close out a very large capital project in short order, and I give my thanks to that effort. I wanted to highlight some of the risk exposure on the federal government, on the federal aid sources to the district. I know that there's been some question in terms of, given what we've seen in the news, what is the actual impact to the district, specifically as it relates to federal aid sources? Again, because it's federal aid, these federal aid sources are not reflected in our general fund budget, they're reflected in our F fund budget. We get roughly $2.3 million in federal funding from the sources allocated highlighted above. We get some educational title grants, or 611, 619 funding, at roughly, you know, $1.1 million that's associated with our special education services. Those dollars do much to offset the salary-infringed benefit costs associated with staff in CESS. We do get some Medicare and Medicaid reimbursement from the feds, and the food service allocation of $645,000 represents the USDA funding that we get to help for free and reduced lunch. Those totals, about $2.3 million. Again, not a significant amount of funding, but funding that could be at risk if federal changes impact our district. I do not think that the federal government is going to come and tell Bethlehem specifically as a school district, we are cutting your 611 grant funding by X amount of dollars. The larger concern the district has is whether or not federal funding is reduced or reallocated or re-administered in any way, shape, or form at the state level, which may then trickle down or cascade to all of the school districts within the state of New York. Now, going back, we do get $33, $34 million in state aid, that's state aid as of today. If there is some change in how federal dollars are allocated to states, including New York State, that may have an unintended consequence to our state aid calculations moving forward. Quick summary of our revenues, school taxes. I am currently proposing a flat tax levy, just for sake of the argument here, to show the impact of the other revenue streams against expenditures. You'll see your pilot payments decreasing significantly by that $3.5 million associated with the PSEG pilot, changes in state aid, for a total revenue of roughly $111.2 million, which is less than where we were last year. So out of the gate, we are already sort of behind in terms of where we anticipate revenues to be for 25-26. Pie chart that sort of distributes by percentage, the school district's revenues. Again, I want to highlight that there's really only four sources of revenue that the district has, and even of those revenue streams, it's somewhat limited in its flexibility to increase those from one year to the next. Three important items involving taxes in general. We talked on a yearly basis about the tax cap, that is what New York State law allows districts to increase taxes by. The tax levy, which actually represents a revenue stream, after taking into consideration all your expenses and all your other revenue streams, gets you sort of the balance, and that balance is ultimately levied in the form of taxes. And then the tax rate, which is the tax levy which is distributed amongst the assessed value throughout the towns of Bethlehem and New Scotland. We talked earlier about the loss of the PSEG pilot, that's been sort of a theme over the past several budget cycles, and what that impact was to the district. The district did a lot over the past several years to plan for the loss of the pilot. Let's give you a quick timeline of the PSEG plan, it's now known as GB2 Power New York Prior to 2002, it was on the tax rolls and was one of the larger tax-paying entities within the district, at $5.2 million in annual taxes. In 2002, there was a 20-year pilot agreement that was entered into between the entity and the Bethlehem Industrial Development Agency, that benefited both the town, the school district, and the various other taxing jurisdictions in the town. In 2024, that pilot was extended in an additional year, which resulted in one additional year of roughly $3.7 million in pilot revenue that benefited, that number is the figure for both the school district and the library. Moving forward in 2025, we were anticipating that the pilot agreement was going to end, and that the assessed value associated with the plan at roughly $100 million was going to roll on the tax rolls. That's where I was in terms of the presentation conversations we've had over the past several cycles, what this budget presentation, the assumptions, our calculations, were driving towards for this presentation until 8:52 a.m. this morning. At 8:52 a.m. this morning, the Town of Bethlehem Industrial Development Agency voted on one, an extension for the pilot for one additional year, which will impact the school district for 25-26. The challenge for the district is, well, there are several challenges with this. The benefit is that additional pilot dollars will come into the school district budget, which will minimize the impact of any tax levy or tax levy increase to other residential and commercial taxpayers. Anticipating that the pilot was going to roll off of a pilot agreement onto the tax rolls, the district had made some certain strategic decisions over the course of the past several years to sort of plan for that loss of the pilot. The fact that it rolled in, while it's beneficial from a revenue source, created some challenges When the pilot was scheduled to come off as a pilot agreement and roll on to the tax rolls, it, let me rephrase, with the pilot ending, it resulted in a tax levy increase not to exceed 5.8%, because we were losing the revenue. The tax cap law allows districts to actually increase taxes a little bit more than maybe usual or customary to make up for that loss in funding. Now with the pilot, as of this morning, rolling on or maintaining its pilot status, our tax levy increase really can't exceed 1%, and that's again because of some of the other decision points we made over the past several years. One of the challenges with the tax cap law is that it only looks one year to the next in terms of what your tax levy calculation is or can be, and does not take into consideration, or reward for that matter, sort of long-distance forecasting, financial planning. So because of some of the steps we took in the prior budget cycles to sort of even or level off this sort of ebb and flow of tax increases, unfortunately hinders the amount of tax dollars that can be generated for 25-26. What I want to highlight is that the increase at, you know, 1.1% is the maximum amount that the tax increase can be absent an override, which means that the board wants to propose a tax increase greater than 1.1%, it can do so, the voting public would need to approve that by a supermajority or a 60% plus one vote, as opposed to just the customary 50% plus one, if you're within the tax cap margin. Compounding the challenge with the tax cap law is that it sort of caps inflation at 2%. And I highlight this graph because over the past several years prior to 2021, the 2% factor in the tax cap law sort of mirrored what the actual inflation impact was, until you get to 2021. What happens in 2021, you see significant increases that are compounded year over year with regard to inflation. In '21 to '22, there was an 8% increase in inflation, there was a 4.7% inflation the year after that, 4.1%, that compounds to roughly a 21% inflation increase over the past four years. The tax cap allows for only a compounded 8.2% increase over those same four years, which means the district has to eat up the... which means the district has to eat up the area shaded in yellow through additional revenue increases or decreases in operational expenses. The district more or less has been able to do that, given the tax levy increases over the past several years, but it's been able to do that only through strategic decision making, really monitoring expenditures, making sure that any proposed expenditures were offset with available revenue. Over time, that becomes more and more challenging to maintain because the inflation costs are just growing at a pace that exceeds the district's ability to sort of manage. This is a quick snapshot of the allowable tax increase under the law, what it could levy or increase by, and what the actual adopted tax levy increase was. So in '23, '24, the district could have increased taxes by 3%, but only chose to leave, increase it by 2.3. Last year, it was roughly 5.3% in terms of an allowable increase, but the adopted tax levy was only 3.25%. In those two years alone, the district did not tax by almost 2 million dollars, meaning that those were tax savings to residential and commercial entities in the town. The goal for the district and the business office is always to live within its means, increase taxes only to the extent necessary. Given the pressures that we're seeing and an increase of 1.1% that's only allowable for '25, '26, the district may be in a situation where it has to sort of recoup some of the tax dollars that it didn't tax in prior years. For every 1% increase in the tax levy yields roughly 731,000 dollars. So if we, to be in compliance with the tax cap law, if we're around 1.1%, you're looking at roughly only an additional 750,000 dollars in additional revenue for '25, '26. Moving on to the expenditure side of the budget, a quick chart of the breakdown of where those costs lie. Salaries at roughly 60.8 million dollars, which take into consideration cost of living adjustments from one year to the next, fringe benefit costs at 30.8 million dollars. We'll see, you'll see a debt service decrease, given some of the strategic decisions we made last budget cycle into this budget cycle, that's actually a decrease. BOSI services are up somewhat nominally, as well our equipment supplies and contractual. Overall, the budget that I am presenting to you today is roughly 117.5 million dollars, which is up from 114 million dollars the prior year. That's an increase of roughly 3.4% or, I'm sorry, 3.4 million dollars or 3%. Same sort of pie chart, again showing sort of the large cost factors driving the budget. Again, the largest component being salaries and fringe at roughly 78%. I take a slide just to highlight the health insurance, the fringe benefits component. It's a large driver of the budget and a significant increase from one year to the next. I want to pay particular attention to health insurance. Health insurance alone is increasing by almost 2 million dollars or 12%. The district is seeing significant increases in health insurance on the hospital medical side. We're anticipating at least an 11 and a half percent in premium expenses. On the pharmaceutical side, we are self-insured plan. We're anticipating roughly a 20% increase in pharmaceutical costs. A lot of that is driven, I often joke, whatever is on TV, our friends and family are on it. GOP ones in particular are a huge cost driver for our pharmaceutical spend and are really what is driving that double-digit increase for RXs. Two retirement plans for the district. TRS is our teachers' retirement system expense. That is calculated at a straight calculation of roughly 10% of payroll. That's down a little bit from, from the prior year. Our employer retirement system for retirement for staff other than teachers is, had an 8.6% increase and represents now roughly 16 and a half percent of payroll compared to 15.2% the prior year. We have some, our social security, Medicare, and some miscellaneous expenses rounding out our fringe benefits for an actual 2.2 million dollar increase of roughly 7 and a half percent year over year. It's a big cost driver for the district. Comparison of debt service, I highlight this only to show because there was a significant decrease. A lot of that is how the district, in consultation with its financial consultant, structured the initial payments for the 2021 capital project. You'll see that was three and a half million dollars in '24, '25 because we front-loaded not only our band payment, but the first year of the actual bond principal and interest payment in the first year. So the band payment went away and resulted in an actual decrease in debt service that we were able to translate into some savings into the budget overall. You'll see the actual net debt servicing decrease from 5.3 million dollars to roughly We customarily pulled together a quick chart to show how we got to the 117.5 million dollars by functional area within the district, broken up between the administrative instructional programs, student support services, transportation operations and maintenance, athletics, technology, fringe benefits, and debt service. We went over some of those earlier. Tonight, Aaron Shevers, our chief technology officer, will go over technology. Ellen Dorado, our director of transportation, will go over the transportation budget, and Nick Ensign, our director of facilities, will go over the operations and maintenance component of the budget. On the administrative side, just a more of a detailed drill down in the functional areas under the admin side. Overall, there is a decrease of roughly 47,000 dollars over '25, '26, compared to '24, '25. When I get to where the size of the gap is on the budget, one thing I want to highlight is that this has been a very conservative budget, conservative in a number of ways. You know, there's always wants, needs, and asks that come from various departments in terms of what they're looking to budget for in the upcoming year. We really held, held the line because we knew the pressures on both the other cost drivers and the impact on revenue streams. So a lot of folks did not necessarily get everything that they wanted. We made sure to the best of the ability they had everything that they needed, but this really is a very conservative budget. There are some uncomfortable areas on the expenditure side where we brought costs down based on prior expenditures, which really do not leave a whole lot of room for changes or unknowns in circumstances over the course of the year. So with conservatism, bringing things in line so we're not increasing taxes more than necessary, to do that, we've got rid of much of the flexibility. We have to encounter things that may surface over the course of the fiscal year. Again, the second page following on the administrative side, again, you'll see roughly a 12,000 decrease in the areas where we could really afford to do so. Some of these costs are sunk. You'll see, for example, insurance for property and casualty, we're expecting roughly a 7 or 8% increase in those costs associated with just market rates. The other items really fall in line where past expenditures have been. These are our, these are our self-supporting programs, meaning that whatever costs are incurred by either continuing it or driver's education are offset budgetarily in terms of the fees and revenue bought, brought in by those programs. We continue to include driver's ed as a program in hopes that it can get sort of respotted and sort of reallocated. It is budgeted for both the revenue and expenditures aside if marketplace can provide what we are needing from the instructional component. Okay, so quick summary of where we're at. Revenues are in at roughly 111.2 million dollars, expenditures 117.5. That leaves an initial gap of roughly 6.3 million dollars. Without using any reserves, fund balance, any additional decreases or increases in expenditures or revenue that result in a preliminary tax increase of 8.6% to close that 6.3 million dollar gap. On the administrative side, there is one request for an addition of roughly 40,500 dollars that represents year two of the digitization of employee records being coordinated through BOSIs for our human resources department. Our goal is to get all of our paper records out of paper form in an electronic digital format. BOSIs has been working over the course of the past year, sort of getting the step ready. And then the next step is the actual scanning of those documents, and that, if the board so approves, will start in the '25, '26 school year. One item that I am proposing the board consider for the May ballot is the establishment of a new capital reserve. You may recall from when we closed out our '24, '23, '24 fiscal year, we're running out of room in our savings account. Not necessarily a bad problem to have because we're going to need those savings dollars for future capital projects. We closed out the '15 and '19 capital reserve associated with both the middle school auditorium project and the 2021 capital project. Both of those reserves have been closed out and liquidated. The '22 capital reserve was established a few years back at a not to exceed amount of 20 million dollars. To date, the school district has funded 17.2 million. There's a balance of 14.3 million dollars in that reserve fund as of, as of today. You can only fund the reserve up to the 20 million. If you take money out of the reserve for projects, it doesn't allow you to sort of replenish those reserve dollars. So the funding limit that we have remaining presently today is 2.7 million dollars. However, given the, the good management of the project by the director of facilities, we will be adding to the reserve, because there were leftover funds from both the middle school, middle school auditorium project and the 2021 capital reserve. Between those two projects, we're roughly adding 1.3, 1.4 million dollars back into that reserve. So the flexibility I only have left in the '22 capital reserve is roughly about 1.3 million dollars. The ballot proposition will just ask the public for permission to create the reserve for the district to fund over the course of the next several years, should funding exist at the end of the fiscal year. Again, this is just a savings account. It's not committing to any particular expenditure for any project that will come at a later date, depending on what the building condition survey of the district highlights needs to be part of the capital project or any other capital project initiatives the board and the district decide to move. But this does need to be a separate ballot measure for consideration by, by the public. Before we jump to Ellen and transportation, any questions, clarification on at least the budget overview?
So first, I just want to thank you for preemptively answering my question about why driver's ed was still up there, because I was going to ask that. And I just want to clarify with the reserve, so for the 2022 capital reserve, for example, which has that 20 million limit, so we can't spend it down and then add more back up?
That's right. One-way door. You can only fund it, which is, we funded 17 million dollars to date, pulled money out, we're going to put some money back in, but I really can only fund an additional 2.7 because we've already funded 17.2.
I thought that was what you were saying. I just wanted to make sure that was clear to everybody. Catherine, you have a question?
Going back, I think one of the things I'm picking up from the presentation is that, given the late breaking news on the pilot, it seems as though we're going to have to reconsider some of these numbers, and it seems like you have a sense of some of it now, but more to be determined. Is that right? Big picture question along those lines, you've got 117 million dollar budget, are you expecting a significant increase or decrease to that bottom line amount as a result of the shift on the pilot?
So, fair question, thank you for that. So the initial gap today, or before this morning, was 6.3 million dollars. That does not include the pilot revenue coming back on. So out of the gate, that 6.3 million dollars is going to be decreased by, when we meet next week, this slide will be different. It'll show a gap without any other decision points at roughly 2.8 million dollars. That translates to roughly a 2.8% tax levy increase. Before, there are other changes coming, right? So that's just, if we were to sort of revise this slide while flying, flying the plane in mid-flight here, that's what that change is. So the 8.6 drops immediately because of the pilot rolling on. But again, if that translates to a tax levy increase still of roughly 3%, I wanted to highlight that the tax cap law, as it currently stands, only allows you to increase it by about 1%. So if you want to maintain that, you still have to find roughly a million and a half, million six of additional funding decreases or revenue offsets to bring that into compliance.
I'll have more questions next week, I'm sure, because I'm not, having the visual helps me really understand that. So I guess to maybe switch my question a little bit, so I understand what you're, I hear what you're saying on the revenue side of things and the impact on the gap and that impacting the levy and what, what we're asking voters to, to make up for, I guess, or taxpayers, excuse me. I guess the part of what I'm driving at is, do you see that impacting the expenditure side of this? Do you see as a result of the pilot coming back on, do you see potential for growth of, you know, putting more money back into the budget? Do you see, or are we just addressing what's happening in the gap with this new information and these new dollars?
So the revenue side of the budget, assuming the role, the role back in of the pilot revenue is sort of set. The other revenue streams outside of a tax levy increase are the, those are pretty much packaged up with a bow. The expenditure side, other than what I presented today, some of those costs are fixed. For example, fringe benefit costs, there's not a whole lot of room to maneuver that. My debt service is, is sort of set because of decisions made in the past. There are some options that the district will be presenting in subsequent meetings in terms of reductions on the programmatic operational side. Some of those are incorporated later in today's presentation even, to sort of whittle down that gap, meeting by meeting, to hopefully get the board in a position where it's comfortable with whatever it may choose in terms of a tax levy and a tax levy increase. So there's more to come, but again, there's a lot of uncertainty out there in terms of what is impacting the state, what is impacting the state, the district by extension. When I'm talking about this, you know, a 5.8% levy increase, if the pilot wasn't in and only a 1.1%, if it is back into the budget, I still need to run those through the state in terms of what I'm calculating makes sense to them. So I've reached out to state controllers' office, I need to do some, some additional work just to verify my numbers. I'll have a more secure number next week for the, I don't expect too much of a, of a change, but I did want to highlight that. This was very quick back-of-the-envelope map based on the events of this morning.
Do we have a concrete number for what the pilot payment is?
Yep. So the, the extension that was approved this morning maintains the terms and conditions of the extension approved last year. No change in the dollar amount for the district specifically, it's 3,476,000 dollars of additional pilot revenue that is not currently in the budget for you. No additional change in terms. I can say that as part of the IDA's public meeting this morning, there are ongoing negotiations for a subsequent pilot at the end of the extension for this, for this round. I can't speak to the terms, I'm not privy to all of those conversations, but I do think there is some decent traction between both the IDA and GB2 Power to, to consider some additional pilot for '26, '27. I do not think we will be in a similar position next budget cycle. I think all that information, the agreements will be in place much earlier than, you know, the day of our actual budget presentation and before the tax cap compliance form needs to be submitted and before the taxable status date. So this was just a very, very unfortunate timing component, given where the district's budget process lines up with real property tax law and the calendar. budget process lines up with real property tax law and the calendar. So it's a little awkward for us, but I don't anticipate a similar circumstance next year.
Would you go back to the slides that talked about the state aid, please? One of the things that just kind of really jumped out to me here as you were talking about where our money comes from and where our funding comes from is how steep the stakes are for the district, if there are any major shifts that either come, if I, the slide before I believe said $2.3 million directly from the federal government.
That's correct.
And then I think, am I right to say it's safe to assume that a fair, that at least some of these dollars from the state is flow-through from the federal government as well?
Yes. I can't speak to the extent or the mechanism by which they flow.
Right.
But the state is leveraging its federal dollars for purposes of state aid. You know, the district is in turn leveraging state aid dollars for its budget. So this is a very closed system, right? Like, any one individual actor or partner that is impacted by anything sort of can run the risk of being impacted either positively or negatively by any other action within the system. So if there is a change in the manner and how the federal government allocates aid to the state, not just education aid, it could be other Medicaid aid or other project aid, the state, because it has its own budget process to maintain and its own taxpayers to safeguard, may look to find that equilibrium elsewhere. And there is the risk that it could be state aid that comes to the district.
Right, right, right. And do we have any, I mean, just to really understand, I mean, if we were to lose a significant amount of state or federal aid, what would that mean for us?
Well, the timing here is important in terms of when that aid is lost, right? Keep in mind that while the district has done a lot to sort of maintain its savings accounts, they're somewhat limited. Sometimes by statute, for example, the district can only maintain 4% of its operating budget and fund balance. That's only $4 million. We're capped at that. So any change to the system would result in either addition, the only other source of revenue are tax levy dollars. And depending on the timing, we would have maybe already levied those dollars and not have an opportunity to go out and re-levy for an additional amount. If that happens in sort of a mid-year process, we would need to consider, okay, what can we do and manage in-house in terms of either spending freezes, or maybe we're not hiring for vacancies, or maybe what was budgeted for in terms of equipment and contractual costs, we need to reevaluate and see what we really need and what we can live without until we can sort of rebalance.
And to follow up on that, several years ago, when the state basically withheld state aid, they called it the gap elimination adjustment. If you remember that, that was a number of years ago. We were looking at deficits of $10 million because of that. So here's your aid, but we're basically withholding that. The only way to make that up is either by tax revenue or reductions in spending.
So if we get monkeyed with at the state or federal level, we've got to put that on the backs of taxpayers to keep, our local taxpayers to keep?
If we want to keep those same programs, essentially, that's essentially, yeah. Those are, we really don't have a lot of options.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You and you have a question?
Can you attempt to walk me through why the pilot changes the maximum allowable tax levy?
Sure. With the, the state tax cap law considers pilot revenue and tax revenue dollars almost the same, kissing cousins, so to speak. So they're both considered sort of taxable dollars in terms of the formula. When the pilot was slated to come off, the state sort of realized, well, you lost some taxing dollars in a way. The formula will allow you to sort of increase taxes to make up for that loss. Now, and that's how we got to our 5.8% figure. With the pilot now rolling in as a pilot revenue stream, because it's back on as tax dollars, well, you don't need 5.8% because you have it. Now you get to 1.1%. And that delta between the 5.8 and, you know, 1.1 is roughly the value of the pilot when you do the calculation. And that's just on the pilot side. The formula's a little complicated. There's ins and outs on other things, one of which is being debt service. We had made some changes to debt service, strategic decisions, based on assumptions at the time, this time last year and a budget cycle or two before. The fact that this changed so late in the game, we're actually, I wouldn't have made those decisions today, knowing what I know today, back when I made those decisions.
That 1% is clearly well below the rate of inflation. The state doesn't care.
It does not. And that's one of the challenges with the tax cap, because it's often referred to as the 2% tax cap.
Right.
Rarely is it 2%. The only thing 2% comes into is you cannot exceed 2% in terms of the inflation factor. Not that you can't increase your taxes more or less than 2%. That's sort of an end result. For example, last year, the district was able to increase by 5.3% its tax, it didn't. It increased it by three and a quarter, but we're still within compliance, because there's just ins and outs. It's a complicated, messy formula in terms of trying to message how that formula plays into actual changes to the tax bill that folks see at home.
Mary, did you have a question?
Just one brief question. You, when we were talking about your budget that you presented before we knew this new information from this morning about the pilot, you had described it as conservative and that we're only addressing needs, not wants, and the concern about the less flexibility to deal with the unknowns of the next year. When you were using that language, are you describing the situation as you understood it yesterday with perhaps a 3% tax cap? Or are you, or were you describing what we may be looking at today with a 1%?
It's actually both, because before this morning, we knew that the, we were dealing with a gap of 8.6%. That's an unmanageable tax levy increase for any district to go out to the public. So by being conservative, it was higher than that until we, you know, after what we've done, we were able to whittle that down to 8.6, given some of the other cost pressures or fringe benefits or cost of living adjustments, loss of other revenue streams that either are not maintaining the pace of expenditures are actually decreased as well. So that's what I'm saying is conservative, but there's additional, we were conservative to get to this point tonight. There's going to be some additional conversations in terms of how much more conservative we need to be to get into a territory that the Board is comfortable.
So just so I understand, initially, we're talking about an 8.6% budget increase. You said that's unsustainable, so let me try to whittle it down, and you got it down to about 3%?
With the addition of the pilot revenue today.
Okay, okay.
But in order to get from 3% to the 1%, there's going to be some additional conversations and dialogue in terms of how to do that.
Okay. I just want to offer my sincere thanks. This is under a normal year. As I understand it, a challenging job to do, and it's a lot of threads to weave together and to hold. And so to you and to all of the staff that you're representing this evening who aren't here before us, just our thanks. It's also, I think, the business office and the folks running the finances in the district are some of the least seen people, but they are what allow us to keep the lights on and to actually keep serving our students and our families and doing, succeeding in our mission. So thank you.
Appreciate that.
Any other questions before we move on to Transportation?
So stay tuned. All this will change next week, but at least provides hopefully a good primer. So to my esteemed colleague, Ellen Dorado, the Director of Transportation, I'll lead us on to the next phase of our presentation this evening. This is going to be a little bit of the John and Ellen Show or the Ellen and John Show. We're going to sort of go back and forth on a couple of things, particularly when we get to bus fleet and bus propositions.
My name is Ellen Dorado, and I'm the Director of Student Transportation. Seeming, it seems like my support staff is gracious enough to show up and support me in the department. So if you wouldn't mind, could I just introduce them quickly?
Please do.
We have Sandra Mortensen. She is the Assistant Director of Special Needs Roots, of Bus Attendants, and she oversees safety and training, the Safety and Training Department. Then we have Kevin Goodemote. He is the Assistant Director of all the Gen Ed routes, drivers and substitute drivers and attendants, and he oversees operations and dispatch. And then we have John Hazelton. He is the fleet supervisor who's really had to step up with the influx of electric buses, and he manages his seven mechanics, and he's the go-to guy when anyone has a problem with the buses. And I thank them for being here tonight. I'm using this because I can't really see very well. We're going to start off with a staffing update. We are budgeted and have been budgeted for 70 driver positions, 30 bus attendants, $2.9 million for our drivers budgeted, and $979,000 for our bus attendants. We have seven full-time mechanics. That number goes down a little bit from last year with the loss of two long, long-time mechanics. We lost them in the last eight months. So we have two new ones, and all positions are filled. We have the Assistant Directors and myself, who I just introduced, and then we have two dispatchers, two full-time dispatchers, one in the morning, one in the afternoon. They overlap for the busy time. And then we have a 19A head trainer who is in charge of training everybody from start to the road test. He handles all our safety meetings, mandatory safety meetings, and he makes sure that everybody under the roof is in compliance. So he has a lot to do. He also drives when we need somebody. And then we have one half-time clerical assistant. She's a return employee, so she manages basically the payroll and purchase orders. I'd like to go back up to the drivers and attendants just for a minute because, well, I think that we all know that people aren't banging down the door to get a job as a driver. It's not just our district, it's our neighboring districts, it's throughout New York State and nationwide. So we've had to work within the parameters of what we have, and we're really making this model that we're creating work, and that's thanks to the continued support of you all here. So we wanted to appeal to all ages, because it's needed. I think that year's gone by, it's been an older average age of the bus drivers, we're older. So we wanted to appeal to all ages, so we're trying to foster the younger career-building, the career-minded, young, you know, couple. So by doing that, we can maybe enhance their day by offering them extra work or maybe an apprenticeship in the Training Department or Dispatch Apprentice. And if we can't do that, if we can't provide the extra work for them to enhance their earnings, then we look for positions within the district, like new needs, just to extend their debt. And then we have a larger group, I think the average portion of our drivers and attendants are, you know, set in their positions. They, they're content, and they want to retire from here. So they're pretty good. And then we have the retirees, the people that can see the light at the end of the tunnel. They want to retire, but they're kind of afraid. You know, some people don't really want to retire and not come back to work, and so that most of the time, we have a conversation, say, well, do you want to come back to work? But the thought of coming back and driving a route that you don't know in the cold, in the dark, it's daunting. So what we've tried to do is create runs, and because of the needs of the student population, we've tried to create runs that are less in hours, four hours, five hours, and we, they don't take a contract, but we're able to offer them to come in and we assign it to them, so they can come in and do the same route each day. So this way, you know, they're happy, they're comfortable, they're already trained, and so we have 12 sub-drivers and three sub-attendants. So that little bubble will, you know, vary, because people will go out and people will come into the bubble. But to keep this bubble happy, we've been able to offer these routes, and where it's not aligned on the budget, it certainly does save us money, because, you know, it's not a revolving door of people and we're not spending money on training hours. Moving along. So $5.7 million for all the aforementioned. So the budget overview, $5.7 million from the slide before, and because of the loss of revenue, the business office has asked us to maybe tighten up our belts and not to cut ourselves short, but just to see where we could tighten up a little bit and save the district some money. So we have an equipment account with $40,000. We've used that for things like the lifts and the bays. Some of those have been replaced, and probably in a couple of years, we'd have to put more money into other equipment. But for now, we've decided to bring that down to $10,000. We feel comfortable enough to do that. We're not cutting ourselves short. We're just cutting back a little bit in the numbers. Fuel is, has come down to 322 budgeted. However, it's kind of tough to get a full view of what fuel will be. Last year, it was a little bit more expensive because we were off-site fueling while the fuel islands were getting done, to the tune of about a dollar more per gallon. So we have come down with that, but with the influx of electric buses, it should come down. Anyway, it's a comfortable number to budget 322,000 for next year. Bus parts and supplies have gone up a little bit because just of the price of things. Insurance remains at $100,000, and that's just insurance for all the vehicles we have in the lot. Other operating costs, that's gone up some, but that does include the GPS software that we have. We're also migrating to a new routing system. That's included in that. It also includes office supplies, uniforms, tools, drug and alcohol testing, off-site bus repair, EZ Pass, no salt, which we use a lot of this year, and things to that nature. Garage building includes radios and electricity for buses. That's about the same at $203,000. So it is an increase of $374,000. We are asking for one addition, and this is the EV bus charge management software. This is actually following through with what the district started, left over from the bond project or with the bond project. That was management of the electric buses, software to help us manage everything about it. I think that the company that was helping us out at the time took their sights in a different direction. And in the meanwhile, between O and M, technology, the business office and transportation, we talked to a few different companies, and we found a company, Mobility House, who has really met our needs. So they have done a lot of work for us, and they can not only manage the new Proterra charging towers that we have in the lot, but also the seven Delta wall chargers that we started off with. That's going to be $22,750. This will be a user interface to help with charging efficiency. They promise to, well, they can monitor all of us, so, monitor all the buses, that they could tell us when peak times are to charge our buses. They can also help us with, which has been a huge part of our jobs lately, and that's data collection and data reporting. It will be easier to grab the data from this software. Over time, we're going to have to see, you know, the man-hours that we put in here, like, who will be managing it, but they will be helping out. They will give us alerts if we ever had a power outage. We used to come in. We used to come in, when the buses would be off on a Monday morning and low on charge, this will alert them or us, whoever decides the management. It's in place. We're going to start training in a couple of weeks. And the more we have electric buses in our fleet, the more important this charge, this So earlier, we talked about the 70 positions and bus drivers that we have, and the 30 that we have budgeted for, and the 30 attendant positions. And I think we all know that we're not going to really make that. We've been hovering about 50, we're at 53 right now in 21 attendance. Last year, it was about the same, it was 52 and 22. We're not going to make it to 70 and 30, so I think we feel safe in taking off five of the drivers, bring it down to 65, and three of the attendants to bring it down to 27. That will be a savings of $512,000. So with the addition of the $22,750 for the charging software, less the reduction of the $512,000 for the employees gives us a net decrease of $489,250. Moving on to the bus fleet. I think we've all seen this slide or something close to that. We have mandates in place with 7127, school districts can no longer purchase fossil-fuel powered buses. An effect of 7135, we can only be operating on zero emission buses, meaning that all the gas and diesel, that's what we use other than EVs, all the gas and diesel buses will have to be retired. As of today, these mandates are still in place with 2027 and 2035. I think we've learned some things over time, and, well, we never said that electric buses were going to be less expensive. They were going to be healthier. So I think that we know now that EV buses are significantly more expensive than traditional The state reimbursement window is, they've closed the gap a little bit, down to eight years, which is better, but it's compared to the five years for traditional buses. So the annual net impact of the district is a little bit greater. The battery warranty is presently eight years on an EV bus. After eight years, the price of the battery would be about $80,000. Today, that's what the price is. Maybe over time, that will come down. Charging infrastructure is looking good here in Bethlehem. When you come here to Bethlehem, you say, "Oh, we have arrived. The infrastructure is down. We even have charging software in place. We're ready to go live with that anytime." Other places, however, in the state, aren't as ready as we are. It is great to be, you know, on the leaderboard. We've been able to help our constituents, but we've also learned a lot, a lot of things that aren't written in any manual. There are some operational limitations and challenges of today's EV buses. One of those unknowns are the state and federal grant funding that Mr. Phillips works very hard on. He's done all the applications, and it minimizes the net cost of these buses. The feasibility and the commitment to the existing 27 and 2035 mandates are still unknown. They could put the brakes on that, or they could stick with it. We're in pretty good shape. We have a good start, but we have a long way to go before we are 100% electrified. National Grid has been working tirelessly to get us ready, so we can go live. Operational efficiencies to meet the district needs, we've had a couple of challenges there with that cold snap that we've had. Buses were going out in the morning and coming back with less than 50%. So they were unable to make up that charge and the brake, so they could go back out for their afternoon run. I know I talked a little bit about this last year, but that was more to the effect that these buses would go out for their daily runs, but they didn't have enough charts to take them on, say, a sports trip. So I'd like to develop or help develop a program to say where these electric buses would be best suited, maybe in town. I know the first five that we got have to continue on the routes if they are, but the rest of them, maybe if they were just in district and maybe under 100 miles a day, until the batteries improved and some of their wrinkles get ironed out, but it's just a thought. So we know that terrain plays a role, and we know that temperature plays a role. We also have not been able to zero in on what the electrical cost would be. We have enough money budgeted, but charging software will help us to zero in on a more Up until now, we've kind of been grouped in with O&M, and then we have the solar and stuff like that. So this is what the replacement plan looks like. And while doing up this chart, there has been no monies that came into play. This is just what, there's been a plan in place for a while that goes far out, maybe to past 2035. So we have 29, 72-passenger diesel buses, 59, I'm sorry. We have 10, we will have 10 this year, the three that I think they are in at the dealer, and they should be coming to us anytime, that'll give us 10 electric buses. There are seven on the lot right now. We have three mid-sized 45-passengers that can be reconfigured, but they are wheelchair buses. We have 24 to 30-passenger buses, we have 26 of those. They can also be reconfigured for wheelchairs. And then we have five eight-passenger gasoline Suburbans. At the beginning of the year, I thought it was in excess to have these many Suburbans, but the student population and their needs is what governs what we'll use. Consequently, we absolutely needed every single one of those, because we had the out-of-district runs that came in with, that all required one driver, one attendant with one student. So the Suburbans really came in handy this year, and we use them all. The replacement plan usually is 12 years for big buses and 10 years for the little buses. So it's usually around 10 in and 10 out, however way that breaks down, but usually more big buses than little buses. So this slide shows you that it should be around six, six big buses replaced and three And now, if we could invite John up.
So Ellen, I want to take a little bit of time to refresh the Board and Public Assembly in terms of the federal and state grant opportunities that are available presently for funding to offset the acquisition price of EV buses. So very similar to the past year or so, there are two funding streams available to the district to offset the cost of EV buses. One is through the Environmental Protection Agency, the Clean School Bus Program, which provides for $200,000, up to $200,000 per EV bus. There is a requirement for any EV bus that you are using the grant dollars for, you must either sell, donate, or scrap a diesel counterpart, 2011 or greater. The second funding stream is the Environmental Bonds Act through the New York State Bus Incentive Programs administered by NYSERTA. That provides for up to $147,000 on a voucher, a base voucher, and then you can increase that voucher in a couple of fashions. If your bus is vehicle-to-grid enabled, which all our buses are, and if you scrap a bus, you get an additional $61,250. These rules of engagement here are what they were last year. The NYSERTA ones have changed a little bit in that if you get, before you were able to stack dollar for dollar on top of each other, both the federal and state funding. NYSERTA had changed its rules a little bit for moving forward, that the base voucher is a little bit less than $147,000. But I highlight this slide in particular, because the district, to provide the Board an opportunity to think about different options, submitted an application last July before the NYSERTA rules changed. So what we were able to do was, we submitted an application for originally six large EV buses, the three that Ellen talked about, and then we put three sort of on layaway. Hey, we may want these at a later date. So those three buses are still available, should the Board want them. These rules would apply, meaning that we would get the $200,000 from the feds, we would get the maximum $147,000 base voucher from NYSERTA, the 12250 and the 61250 for the scrappage. Very, very rudimentary math in terms of what those look like. So what I want to highlight is, because of the district's diligence in getting some grant applications in in advance, we're able to, if the Board so chooses, any EV bus purchased would actually result in a $0 impact to local tax dollars. Meaning that between the federal funding and the NYSERTA funding, we would not have to either go out to issue debt or spend any tax dollars associated with those acquisitions. This is how they would currently stack up. Again, it's not, it's $0 of an impact. Some of that is spread over the course of time, only because state aid is going to be reimbursing us, the district, the full gross cost of the bus, not the net. So over the course of time, we actually result in a $0 impact. That's all well and good in terms of what the impact from a dollar perspective is for the district. But as we were doing research on the operational component of EV buses, one of the concerns that Ellen and I had was the comparison to EV buses and your traditional diesel buses in terms of their operational, how often are they on the road? So I asked Ellen to do me a favor. I said, "Pull the last fiscal year, or the last calendar year, 180 session dates, and give me a side-by-side comparison in terms of the EV buses, in terms of when they were operational, when they could be on the road compared to their diesel counterparts." Again, the EV buses are new technology. The manufacturers, the district and Transportation are managing not only expectations, but some of the changes and operational challenges associated with EV buses. I think this slide is sort of important to sort of show the side-by-side days that EV buses are not able to transport kids compared to their diesel counterparts. So while the funding is helpful, in some cases, the EV buses, when they're down, they cost me three, they cost the district three buses operationally. You've got the EV bus that is up at the shop. You have the EV bus that we had to scrap, sell, or donate to get the EV bus. And then I need to pull a diesel bus to fill the route of the EV bus that's up at the shop, doing whatever maintenance. Some of this is not necessarily EV-related maintenance associated with the battery. Some of it's EV bus maintenance, because the real estate underneath the bus has changed to incorporate the battery. It's not necessarily, we're not talking oil changes and tire rotations here. We're talking mechanical issues associated specifically with EVs. It's not to say that there's mechanical issues with the diesel buses, which is why I wanted to sort of show a true side-by-side comparison outside of your customary day-to-day routine maintenance.
Can I footnote that?
Absolutely.
I just wanted to footnote what John's saying. When it comes to electric buses, there's mandatory maintenance that only the manufacturer can do. So even though some of these, they look like, oh, but there were some drivetrain issues in the beginning, some compressor issues, but a lot of these things, like ancillary plug, things like that, that's just really a filter. The important thing to know is that everything EV has a mandatory maintenance program to the tune of $2,000 a year, so that's on top of regular maintenance. So training has become an issue for, well, for us, because they had Level 1 and Level 2 training. Level 1 training would be somebody like me or the drivers, what we need to know to go out and operate an EV bus. Level 2 training, the mechanics received, so they can do some things, you know, they can change light bulbs and whatever else they do for their maintenance. Also DOT, but this other, you know, warranty work always goes back to the dealer, but it's, Level 3 training are the people at the manufacturers that can only do this for now. It will probably change over time. When we were on break, I read an article that there is going to be a Level 3 program coming out, which would enable probably our mechanics to, would get more training, and then maybe the mechanics, maybe it would trickle down. Who's going to do it? I don't know. But over time, it will iron out and get better. But if you look at the, we took the seven EV buses that we had and the newest seven diesel buses. The difference is considerable with days off of the road. One driver had an EV bus assigned to her, and it was in December, and she still hadn't gotten it back from the dealer. The dealer is also getting, the dealer and the manufacturers are getting jammed up with, there's a lot of, you know, maintenance warranty work, and they're ironing things out. So they're jammed up. Besides the influx from the mandate, they're trying to manufacture buses, so everything is kind of slowed up for now. If the buses that we ordered last year, the three EV buses should be coming next month soon, they'll be coming soon. Even diesel buses, people are beefing up their diesel fleet before 2027, and they're taking almost a year to get on the lot. So I think things are just jammed up.
One point regarding the funding. While the funding, that's how it's set up under statute right now. We had reached out to the EPA because of two reasons. A, it's the largest source of funding, and given some of the pauses instituted at the federal level, we wanted to make sure that that funding was secure. We have not heard back. So while it was paused and unpaused, in terms of what we heard in the news cycles in terms of EPA funding, we have not heard confirmation one way or the other from Matthews, who is reaching out to their EPA reps. So I just want to highlight that while we've made application, funding has been granted. I don't know if it's necessarily secure, given some of the changes recently.
John? Go ahead.
So Ellen and I want to provide the Board with some thoughts and options here, and we'll provide a recommendation in a moment in terms of what we're looking or the options for the Board to consider for a bus proposition. So presently, we're recommending three, well, let me take a step back. This is sort of a cross-comparison of what a EV to diesel cost comparison is for both a large bus and a small bus. So an EV large bus, the gross cost is $456,000. It's actually a little bit higher, I think, from, these are the current costs today. We do have some quotes that are a little bit higher. We're working and massaging those quotes with Matthew, so we can get you an accurate cost. Costs are going roughly up by 2.5 to 3% per quarter in terms of increases. That's driven partly by demand, partly because there's a lot of funding in the system right now, which is driving the cost up. So roughly $456,000 on an EV bus. The potential federal and state aid gets you roughly $360,000, results in a net cost of $0. The counterpart on the large bus on the diesel side is $180,000. That is a large delta between the gross That is a large delta between the gross cost per the bus between EV and diesel. And you can see it's similar on the small bus. A $326,000 price tag for a 28-passenger EV bus compared to roughly $92,000 for a gas-powered bus. So we are proposing three large buses and three small buses to be considered on your bus prop for a total of six. The board's decision on whether you go EV or diesel or half and half, we can certainly have some additional conversations with that. Given the concern with the EPA funding and whether or not it's actually secured, given the timing of when we need to vote on things here in time for a May ballot, I'm not sure if the EPA is going to be able to give us an answer first and foremost, and whether or not that answer will hold now, next week, next month, or by the time that we actually purchase the bus and are seeking reimbursement. Couple with the operational challenges that we're seeing, at least initially, we're recommending to do three large diesel and three large, small gasoline-powered buses. The actual cost of the bus prop would be $814,000, provides us some time to beef up our existing fleet with traditional fueling before the 2027 mandate. Those buses are reimbursed at roughly 66% by state aid. As on the state side, there are no additional federal or state grants for this type of prop. It would be all regular state aid for payback over the course of five years for a net impact to local taxpayers of roughly $278,000. I know that there's a lot to unpack there, particularly because we did our due diligence. We have grant funding, at least, from a handshake agreement that would result in a zero-dollar price tag. My concern is, we go, we put a prop up, and we wind up with not getting any buses because of things outside of our control, coupled with some of the operational impact that we're seeing. We have 10 EV buses, or will have 10 EV buses onsite now. That's roughly 10% of the district's fleet. I'd like some time to see how our EV chargers are working, associated with the 2021 capital plan that were just implemented. There's a $23,000 request for charge management to see, all right, this is the next phase here in terms of managing the electrical load for the EV buses that we have. Adding three or six additional EV buses, given some of those challenges, the board can certainly have that. We would, you know, absent some change in circumstances at the state or federal level, those dollars may be there for a zero-dollar impact, but six buses at $278,000 isn't necessarily a bad deal either. $24.98 an hour is the starting rate, a very, very competitive, not only for Bethlehem, but within the capital region. There are recruiting and retention bonuses that are available as well. It's a great staff, wonderful people to work with, great kids. So anyone that's interested, has some downtime, please apply.
And then if I could just add, when we were talking about the bus drivers and who we have, we are covering, we have six open runs, so we do cover 23 runs, not routes, 23 runs each day. And we wouldn't be able to do that without an extraordinarily flexible staff. So it's always been my mission to target each age group, like I talked about before, but also to have a happy and content staff. I think we were well on the way to accomplishing that, so if you know anybody, send them our way. And I think that's it for us, right, John? Did anyone have any questions for me?
I'm sure there are some questions. I just wanted to start off by saying thank you for presenting and to your support team over there for coming and cheering you on. And Bob, do you want to go ahead?
Sure. First of all, as was mentioned earlier, thanks so much to your department, just in general. I know you're not front-facing, and a lot of times the work's done behind the scenes, but you're getting the kids safely to and from school, and that's an incredible thing. So thank you very much. Looking at the EV buses and how much they're down, I mean, some of the numbers were above 50% of the days. Are you able to calculate, like, a financial cost for a day out of service? I mean, how does that, how does that reflect in terms of money spent, you know, that wouldn't otherwise be spent? Or is it all, you know, so I guess repairs, additional wear and tear on the other buses? I mean, it sounds like you guys were able to deal with it in terms of having enough buses to address the situation.
We've been getting by barely as far as calculating the cost of repairs. So far, a lot of the repair work has been under warranty, thankfully. They, the dealer has taken a lot of the towing charges from us that we, you know, because they have to be towed up to, you know, Matthews. I think we've only had to pay $600 in towing so far. They've been very willing to work with us along the way. For more specific numbers, I, let me look at that for you, and I can get back to you.
And then is it your sense that that is a cost that will stay the same or grow up or down, given, I don't know if warranties are running out, or we think that maybe, you know, they're going to work these problems out? I don't know if you've been able to think about that.
Well, it's a great question, and, you know, warranties will be running out eventually, but, you know, as time has gone by, they've, you know, when the second generation came out and so on and so forth, they're ironing out problems. And for us here at Bethlehem, we've, you know, we've been able to share some of our problems with our neighboring districts, but to help them as well. But yeah, I think that they're going to improve. I think the batteries will improve. You know, the battery in a bus will be, you know, failing over time, just like your phone battery would. It loses strength, so I think that they're working on the batteries and the functionality of those. So, but do I think that it will work out over time? Yes.
Thank you.
One thing, Bob, if I can, the fleet's structured at 100-plus vehicles now. Every day, we have roughly 55 buses run and routed. Now, compounding that fleet utilization, we have DOT mandated inspections. That's X number of buses that are coming off on a daily basis. Then your regular maintenance that are coming off. So when we have buses that are being maintained for outside of ordinary DOT, you know, daily maintenance, runs into some flexibility for Ellen and her team to have that, you know, that cushion of additional fleet vehicles to pull it, you know, oh, and this one wasn't scheduled for maintenance, we got to pull it in now. So that was a challenge that I saw, was when we have seven, now 10 buses that are out for things that are out of the ordinary or unplanned, starts to eat in the operational efficiencies and flexibility for other things, maybe a school trip, right? We were going to use this bus for a trip out to, you know, wherever, and now we need to use that because we had an EV bus that was down, and we needed that bus to, so it creates some logistical issues?
Thank you.
A question, which I think would be for you, John, is, I hear what you're saying about the, with the EV funding from EPA for obvious reasons. It's not, we don't know what's happening with that right now. Would there, but if it does come, if it is there, then it feels a little bit like we're leaving, leaving money on the table. Would there hypothetically, would there be a way to write the proposition so that it would be to purchase the six diesel buses that you recommend plus three EV if those three EV were at no cost to the taxpayer?
Yes. We did something similar to that in the last bus proposition for last year, if and only if grant funding is available with a not-to-exceed amount local cost of whatever we decided at the time. We can certainly do that. It gets, the proposition gets wordy awfully quick and confusing to us from a messaging perspective, as well as those folks voting on it. So...
And you have to put, just to clarify, I think you have to put the total cost
Right.
Is what they're voting on. So if you were to add three EV buses, you have to add that total cost as the overall proposition?
Right.
So the proposition is going to look much larger.
Than what the net impact would be.
I hear you. I'm just, I'm wondering if there's a way to write it such that, or even break it up into an A and a B or something like that, such that we're still, kind of where I'm going is, I want to make sure that we're getting the buses that you need, but that if we have the money, if it comes in for these other ones, that we're not throwing that away?
Yes.
Given that those mandates are still out there.
And that's why I wanted to talk about it, both in terms of the financial piece, as well as the operational piece. So yes, they may be free, but to me, there's a question of, yes, they're free, but they're, we can't use them as frequently or as necessary because of some of the operational issues. So I...
And also, don't, if we get three EVs, we still have to scrap three diesels, correct?
That's correct.
So we'd have to, if we did six of the diesel gas, so three, let's say, three large, and did three...
So three large and three small.
Yeah, and then did three EVs. We would have to get rid of at least three diesels, correct?
That's right.
Yes. And then the plan with the replacements of the diesel and the gas is we would be replacing those with others.
So presumably, you're already getting rid of six diesel vehicles?
That's correct.
So you could just use them as the trade-in?
Well, you would use older ones.
Yeah.
But your net diesel gas would be, depending on whatever that proportion would be the same at the end of the year?
Yes. And then in terms of a contingent proposal, I understood you to sort of be, I guess, flagging the issue. I mean, the last time we did it, I think it was contingent because we hadn't heard from the EPA at the time. It seems slightly different now in that...
We got it, but maybe. Before, we weren't sure, but now it's a little bit different, right?
Correct. And even if they say something one day, who knows what's going to happen the next day? So that was, the contingency was based seemingly on what we would assume to be a binding and good faith representation.
Well, we were still in the application process last year, which is, I think, the difference. We did the, in the interim between last budget cycle and this cycle, we applied twice, received the necessary grant funds, so those are secured at least on paper, which is where we were not last year. We had a good, thinking that we were going to get approved, but now we were.
Catherine? I guess I have some questions, but I just want to make a statement, which is that it is mind-boggling and disturbing that we, municipal government, are trying to figure out how to bond and tax and make plans for the next 10 years when we cannot take a grant commitment from the federal government that has already been made on full faith. I just, that is insane, and the potential impacts and repercussions of the chaos that we're seeing fiscally are substantial. And so, on the question side, I think, can you talk a little bit about the commitment, the funding committed, and what that looks like as far as what type of funding, what does committed mean in this context, as far as what have we already, what has already been agreed to?
So we have paper-verbal agreement for $200,000 for the large EV buses, plus the maximum NYSERDA funding for the large buses. The small buses, we submitted an application. I believe we were awarded that. We're courting with Matthews for a NYSERDA parallel one for the small buses. I do not anticipate that to be a challenge. NYSERDA is more than willing to meet us that way. We were just, we considered the small buses a little later in the process, and we're just working through that application process now.
Okay. So on the EPA side, it's not a contract? It's an award letter?
No, it's an award letter. For the large ones, we had applied for and were awarded six. We bought the three, and then I said, would you kindly keep three? We're going to come back this year.
Right.
So we're, I just submitted my second extension, because they're only, the only, the extension only lasts for six months, and our schedule says I need to do a second extension to get us where we're at today. We submitted that. In the interim, we got a bounce back from them. We're, we receive, but we're not considering anything until we get further guidance. So I have the extension, but I was expecting either, yes, we'll carry it over another six months, but this was a little bit of a different messaging that I got the beginning part of February.
Got it. And then on to the contingency aspect of this. For quite a while, the district carried, and I'm not, I'm asking questions, I'm like, I'm not, I'm not trying to, for a while, we carried a much larger fleet than we needed day-to-day-to-day-to-day. And then over time, the board has been working with the transportation department to right-size the fleet, as I understand it, right? If we're talking on the order of three buses, if we're talking about wanting to take advantage of...
Excuse me.
...of some of the savings we get from EV operations, and if we're talking about wanting to take advantage of some of the dollars that are on the table, would it make sense from, and you don't have to answer this tonight, right? Is there any sense in moving forward, attempting to move forward with the contingency verbiage that we're talking about and a not-to-exceed amount that would reflect the grants minus the scrappage award? And say, we'll sit on three diesels and intend to use the EVs longer, and we'll say no thank you to the scrappage award. There will be some cost for the EVs. It wouldn't be zero, but it would still be over $100,000 less than a diesel.
So the scrappage requires, NYSERDA requires the scrappage.
That's not an option.
That is not, no, it is an option. The EPA, you need to sell, donate, or scrap. So...
I see. So there is no keeping?
There's no net, you know, I can't get an EV and keep the grant money and maintain a diesel.
Okay.
I need to do something, and I sort of just provide the sweetener in terms of dollar value if you were to scrap.
No, that makes perfect sense. I'm just trying to understand the different moving pieces of the grants and the opportunities, as well as the challenges. And I want to tack on to what Bob said and to, and to the folks who are working with us every day. I'm one of the biggest EV supporters you're going to find, and I fully recognize that we are at the beginning of a transition and that this is not easy. And so to you and to your drivers and to your mechanics and to your team who deals with us on a day-to-day basis, I can see how hard you're working, and I can see that this isn't easy every day. I think that the value is there for our students and for our community. However, I know that, I see the challenges, so thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
One of the things I'd like to point out, just on the charging side, the Capper Project installed three chargers that are capable of charging 12 buses.
Yeah.
We have seven wall-mounted chargers presently. That allows us 19. We're still not sure, you know, we're working our way through this process in terms of how all that charging infrastructure works, coupled with the charging. So we're at 10 EV buses now. Theoretically, if they were all on-site, we would eat a decent amount of that charging capability in terms of plugs up. You know, any additional EV buses would require, or utilize any sort of additional plugs that we have. I just want to highlight that we have...
I'm not fully getting where you're going here.
So we have 12 plus seven, 19, right?
Right.
Am I right on that? Long day. So 19 charging ports, right?
Yes.
Where you have 10 buses, depending on what the board wants to do in terms of, I just want to highlight that, not, don't order more buses than plugs that we may have.
Yes. I hear that. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
John, do you have a question?
Yeah, a question for you on the other operating cost. You mentioned that a lot of that is for off-site work that gets done for the buses. And you mentioned that our mechanic team is very busy. Is that because we're so busy, stuff has to be sent out?
No.
Or is that more electric buses being sent out for...
Right. Right. And that mandatory, mandatory maintenance program that they have in place for electric buses?
And are all of our mechanics as trained as far along as possible on electric as we can be?
Yes, sir.
Or is there more to be done?
We are all trained as far as we can be for now.
There are certain aspects of the buses that, you know, anything, put in an orange wire, anything with an orange wire, you know, don't touch, right? You do need some specialized training for that. So our, our mechanics on staff are not going to touch that, right? That is still sort of dealer, battery manufacturer, those would have to go up regardless. Warranty, non-warranty, until the training catches up to onsite staff that we're comfortable as a district having them work on that, that the dealers... the dealers, the manufacturers are comfortable that it doesn't avoid any warranty. There may still be some times where they have to go up, but right now, they're up for not only those orange wire related issues if they present themselves, but a lot of other warranty related issues that are still currently covered. That our folks may be able to do at some point, but their, the buses are still under warranty, so we're maximizing that.
So, one other question. So this number is based upon the bus we have. If we were to get more electric buses, does that number go up because there's more, more buses that would potentially need more off-site work?
Yes. But I think it would also start to level out a little bit as time goes on and they improve the overall bus.
No, agree. I'm just saying, for like, for like, this year, like, if this is based upon the 10 buses that we're going to have.
Oh, yes.
If we were to, if we were to do whatever, more buses for next year, that number would then need to be considered to be increased.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
You have?
Yeah. A few math questions, mostly. Right now, in your position currently, you've got 70 drivers, 2.9 million, roughly 40,000 per employee. But then, when you're talking about your reductions, you're trying to reduce three drivers, five drivers.
Five.
350 grand, which is 70 grand per employee. So there's a big discrepancy there, and I was curious about that.
There is. On the salary side, it's just straight salaries. The reductions include both the salary and any associated fringe benefit costs associated with the reduction.
I see.
So we budget full, hospital, medical, any retirement costs. The reduction actually incorporates the entire employee salary.
Where that's not, but doesn't.
Right.
Okay, that makes sense. Same thing applies to the attendance. The other thing on attendance is there's a 18.9, 19% increase in cost.
Yes.
For the same number of attendants this year.
Well, there was mandatory training that came into play that would provide our attendants a considerable raise per hour. They all, they all did the training.
As you would. Right.
Right.
Okay. That was my question. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just the bus proposition, that has to be approved by the board before the budget adoption is due, correct?
Or is it the same?
I thought the bus prop had to, usually, we had to be done a little bit earlier.
Have to go back and look how we did that.
Yeah, maybe next time. I think it, I feel like last year, we had.
It all gets tied ultimately into the, to the public notice, right?
Yeah.
So that's what we usually.
Okay. I wasn't sure.
We research, we research that just over here.
Yeah, we just make sure we're on the right timing. You have to do that question.
Back on the same thing. So now, looking at the total spreadsheets, you've got a salary and positions, you know, 40,000 per driver, for instance, but there's no other line in the budget for overhead costs, health insurance premiums.
Because, fair question, you and. We actually budget that on a, sort of at a macro level. So, all your retirement, health insurance was sort of in a, it fall into the undistributed category of the budget, and it's on a district-wide. We do not allocate fringe benefit costs on individual area. We can certainly do that. It'd be an estimate, only because.
Sure.
But I will tell you that all fringe benefits are budgeted for all FTEs that are eligible. It's just at a, at a much more macro level.
So really, when we're looking at this 500K suggested reduction, it's like, in the way it's budgeted, it's really like a 350K transport reduction and then 150K benefits reduction that we actually see somewhere else.
Right.
All right.
Any other questions for Ellen? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine?
John, as we consider various options and recognizing that some that we have, I do remember being on a crunch on bus props in the past. I'm wondering if you would touch base, or if, if the board agrees with me, to touch base with the attorneys, just to understand the different options, the up-to language, can we split this into two props, that kind of thing? Is that worth investigating with the attorneys? Is that something that we feel we already have a, have an understanding how to do that? Should we want to?
You could, you could break them into different propositions if you wanted to. So you could have one with the EV, then we just, without the language. If you put it into two, it just might be.
I don't think you could phrase it as an either-or proposition. I think you would have to do EVs as a standalone, diesels as a standalone. If you get into this A or B, it confuses the, it gets overly complicated, so.
Right.
Maybe we could reach out to them, like, just as a, we know what, we know what a diesel
Yep.
prop would look like for three and three. What would it look like if we did, you know, three large diesel, three large, three small diesel, and three EV, assuming they're free?
Contingent upon.
In one.
Yeah.
In one prop.
So we would be getting, yeah, so hypothetically, if we.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm on bone.
Or, or maybe it's two. I mean, that's what I'm not sure, is like, in terms of, in my mind, I could see it written as A and B, to keep it clear, but I don't know if it, if that.
We've always done it as one in the past, so that it's not, so that it's not splitting off.
Super cumbersome and.
Right. Right, right.
We could, we could check with council.
Right, right. Just what, yeah, I guess that's what I'm just, that's what I'm asking. It's like, what is somebody's legal opinion on the best path for here? Thank you.
And I guess whether there's a downside in, from your perspective, in doing that.
If you're counting three, three EV buses, you want.
Like, yeah, that's kind of a question.
This was a very challenging, you know, component, you know, argument for me to make, right? Like, look at the financial guy telling him, you know, not to take grant.
I don't like to give back free things.
Well, I, I hear you, but it was the operate, like, I wanted to at least couch that, first off, there's nothing as a free lunch, right?
Absolutely.
So, there are some operational challenges that are dictating a little bit the impact of the financial components. I, I hear you, to the extent that the grant funding is actually secure and available and is going to be, you know, able to be obtained. It's a difficult argument to be like, wait, because here's what I don't want to happen, three years from now, when the buses are $600,000 each.
Right.
And we're paying.
Full price.
Full price for them, and you're like, well, you left grant dollars on the table. But I wanted to try to paint as complete of a picture as I could financially, operationally, and, you know, all the, all the components here.
And that's the responsible thing to do. And thank you. I think that's, because that's part of the conversation.
And why I hear like, their need for, and wanting those, like, the six diesel ones that they feel like they can count on. But again, it's the giving back free things.
You have any other comments?
It's tend to die. I suggest, before we let Erin go, we let it run also.
Yes, that was going to be my suggestion. Why don't we take a two-minute recess, so that our visiting PIG and SUPER students, if you guys would like.
You're welcome to stay.
Certainly can stay, but if you want to come up and sign out and go home, you can do that too.
An additional person in this role last year, so there are two people currently in this role, and we're cutting it down to one person, which was needed to learn this position because it is one of our very specialized positions in the department. We're also cutting the Destiny Library Service that we have. That's the software that the library uses. And we buy that in my budget because it is owned by Aspen, so it fell in the same area. We're actually moving to a centralized Bosse's library system, but that will be part of Dr. Hurst's budget, so you will see that there. And we also have an IPA coming off from Bosse, so that is a reduction there as well. So overall, we are looking at about $300,000 less, again, about 6.25%. And that's all. Questions?
Only one, which is, I assume, like, hey, love beer.
It's a internal, no, it's a purchase agreement. I forget what the I stands for. Internal, in, what's the?
Inter.
Intermunicipal.
Intermunicipal.
Purchase agreement.
Yes, with, that we do with Bosse. So we've had a number of large purchases, like, when we needed to buy, you know, 1,000 Chromebooks, we would, it's essentially a loan through Bosse's.
Okay.
More just of, just a note, I really appreciate the way your department looks at its work beyond providing the hardware, but rather also bringing in the students to all of the work that you're doing, the help desks, the work that you're doing to get one stood up at the middle school, and really looking at the programmatic opportunities that our technology provide beyond just getting the gadgets in front of the people who need them.
It helps keep, keep the cost down, too, having our students able to fix the Chromebooks. So we have our own internal workforce, and they're learning real-life skills and the customer service skills and the technical skills. So it's, it's great for them, it's great for us, it's great for the community, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Erin?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And last, but definitely not least, we have our O and M presentation.
I don't know if you saved the best for last. Mine is a little longer than Erin's. Good evening, everybody. Nick and Sonia, Director of Facilities, here to present my proposed budget for this year. As far as my budget overview, my salaries, again, that's increases due to cost of living and step increases with the hourly staff. Equipment and vehicles, I just want to highlight, if you look at last year to this year, it looks like a substantial increase in the equipment and vehicles. And then, if you look down at special projects, you'll see a substantial decrease. So when you add those two together, it's a net reduction of about $85,000, $86,000. So it's a little, normally, they're right around $100,000 each, but they're a little skewed this, this year because we are requesting, and you'll see it in the future here, one of our vehicles that we really need to replace. It's imperative that we do that. As far as our utility costs, there is a reduction, and that would be our electricity, natural gas, water, and our communications. Our contracted services have increased slightly. That is due to some of our recent contracts going, expiring. So one of those that was substantial is our snow removal services and our cartage, our waste and refuse. That increased substantially. We are, we have the drafts getting ready to go back out for bid, to rebid those, because we kind of got stuck with what we had last year. The custodial and maintenance supply, there's a slight increase there, and I will discuss the special projects and the vehicles and equipment in a, in a few minutes. Overall, it was an increase of $152,000 from last year. The department, the salary for the department, we have 39 full-time custodians, 15 maintenance personnel, and four supervisors, myself, Brian Bodnar, Ellen, who are Assistant Superintendent of Buildings and Grounds, and one senior current account clerk typist. That all equates to, excuse me, and including the substitute salaries and the overtime for events and emergencies, the salaries are about 3.76 million, which is slightly up from last year. Equipment and vehicles, there are two pages, long list, not, not high-cost items. Again, the standard, we have a replacement program for our vacuums, and I won't go and read every single one of them, but we're looking for eight vacuums at $850 each. The wet-dry vacuums for the high school and middle school at 1375 each. The infamous Doodlebug Stick, I remember last budget cycle, they, we did purchase them, and they became very useful. We use those for our bathrooms, and it has a substantial impact on our effectiveness of cleaning and disinfecting our bathrooms. The cylindrical scrubbers or the floor machines, the buffers that folks see, we need to replace some of these. They're greater than, this particular one that we want to replace for the high school is over 10 years old. Can't figure out exactly when it was made, but talking to our folks, it's been here since I've been here, if you will. So it's, it's greater than 10, and we're due. Doesn't mean we're throwing the old one out. We'll repurpose it to another location. One of the items, I originally had two on here, and speaking with John and working through this, we strategized the Dolphin Pool Scrubber. It's an automatic machine. You throw it in a pool, if you're not familiar, and it crawls around the pool and cleans the pool. It's done daily. We have one each at the. We have one each at the high school and middle school, and the middle school one has been very challenging to keep operational, so we're requesting one new Dolphin Pool Scrubber. Our pools get lots of use. The floor burnishers, again, if you looked at them, it looks like one of them floor machines, we do have to replace a couple of those. The, the burnishers are 15 years old at Hammergrill and Slingerlands is 12 years old, and we're looking to keep those in good working order to keep our schools clean. The Hawk Floor Scrubbers, the high school's is 21 years old, we have used it past its useful life. Transportation Department with a new addition that was installed in the Capitol bomb project does not have one, so we're looking to add one at that location. We don't transport them between buildings unless we have an emergency, so we would like to keep one at Transportation. And then the replacement of the one at the middle school, which is 12 years old. The chair movers, these are, obviously when we have events or what we call chair pushes, what that allows you to is to stack multiple, multiple chairs on one device and one custodian can move it throughout the building. So we're looking for 10 of those so that we can distribute them, as shown, between the school buildings. Again, with the, continuing on with the custodial equipment, air movers, the snail fans, they look like a snail that go on the ground. We, we found that when we did our pedestal fans, we were using those to try to move air for the environment, these are specific for drying the floors after spills or mopping the floors. And then hand trucks, standard, we need hand trucks to move equipment around for the safety of our employees. On the maintenance side of this, we're, we did carry a line item. We talked a couple of times about, you know, temperature mitigation throughout the district, you know, we gave options previously on, you know, do we purchase equipment, do we rent equipment, will we need the equipment, we don't know. So there is a line item here that would, if approved, would allow us, if we had to rent five 12-ton units like we did. Doesn't necessarily be, have to be at the high school, but, or a combination thereof for smaller spaces. The, the big one here is the replacement of the 2008 Ford F-350 box truck. If you're not familiar, we re-prepare all of our hot meals at the high school and they are delivered by Operations and Maintenance to each of the elementary schools. The 2008 box, it's 17 years old, it's at its end of useful life, and Transportation does our maintenance. We don't think the frame's going to last much longer. We do have a 2017, which is the white one that we primary, primarily used, what I would like to do is replace the 2008 with new, letting our 2017 be the backup now. Again, we, we have to have this vehicle. The way we ship our food, we don't have another vehicle that's large enough to transport it inside, and I don't think Claire would be pleased with us driving around with it on our rack truck exposed to the elements. So that is one that, we had more on here in, in working with John, we, we felt that this would be the most critical item that we need. And then we have some smaller items here, our salters, District does our own surface treatment, the Skidmount replacement salter for one of our trucks, and a replacement painter for the fields. We only have one field that has the lines permanent and we, we use paint and chalk, a combination, and we're, we'd like to replace one of them. And then the John Deere Gator that serves the turf field does not have a windshield or a canopy, requesting a windshield for it, especially in the colder months when the guys are driving that thing, it's brutal. And you can't have a windshield without the canopy, so those are our equipment and vehicles, totaling $161,950. Special projects for this year, it's a short list. We talked about this in the Educational Cooling Project, the Elsmere Elementary School's second-floor solar film, we're calling it the Initiative, this is one of the hotspots that we agreed we need to deal with, so we're asking for the $16,000 to, to complete that. As an aside, the middle school's second floor is 100% complete, and Slingerlands ELC, which was approved by the Board last year, for this year's budget was completed yesterday. So again, if we do this, we're going to be continuing on with the initiative for those hotspots. The, the second line item is a solar film district-wide for $30,000, and that, that will continue this process. So every year we want to do this, and again, the second floor is where the critical ones, we're, we're knocking them down quickly, and then we have some spaces that are relatively hot even on first floors. You know, again, we did Glenmont years ago to, to resolve that issue, so we want to continue on with that. And then the last line item is a small one for Glenmont, the playground. At the front right-hand side of the building, you have the insurance firm that is next door, there's a, there's a fence that goes down the property where all the play areas are, except it's open between the building and the existing fence, and we want to enclose that. Ms. Effernan had pointed out, we had a couple of issues with some folks just showing up abruptly while the students and staff were out on the playground, and that would kind of put that barrier. And it also prevents the students from running off the playground and out into potential traffic area. And that totals 51,000. This year, as we discussed in the previous years, the Capitol Outlay, we're recommending the Hammergrill Elementary School door, exterior door alarmed or monitoring system, excuse me. Again, to refresh, it will send an alarm or notification during the day. You know, at night, if someone opens a door that has, shouldn't be open, we get a burglar alarm. During the day, if somehow a door either fails to shut or is propped open on purpose, this will send a notification to specific personnel so that they can go and investigate and, and resolve the issue. The high school was completed, and it has been in operation, and we've gotten positive feedback on that. I don't really have data to prove or show how much we've reduced our door jars or door propping, but I can tell you visually, you know, because I'm out and about a lot, I see a lot less for what it's worth. So the, I, I still think this was a good investment. We actually utilized it because we found that on the weekends, we weren't monitoring because we had so many activities, and we found that the principal actually requested we turn that on, on, on the weekends as well. So now we are covered seven days a week from 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and then after it's burg alarm, so it's pretty good. So this, this year we, or this budget cycle, I'd like to do Hammergrill. We have obviously five elementary schools to do. Hammergrill and Slingerlands are comparable in size or number of doors, not size of student enrollment, not size of building, but the number of doors. Each classroom has its own emergency door, which is exterior. You know, again, I, I talked with John, we, we discussed this, how do I figure out which, where to start with the elementaries? Hammergrill, I recommend because it's kind of out there in the middle of nowhere. Yes, there's residents across the street, but nothing really tight adjacent, nothing to keep an eye on that, we have the trails in the back, so, you know, there's the potential that odd things could happen there. Slingerlands is a bit more open. You know, you've got that huge field behind you, you can see for, for a long way, and we don't necessarily have the same issues at Slingerlands as we do over at Hammergrill, so I'm recommending we start with Hammergrill for the elementaries. As I mentioned, the high school's completed, the middle school is in progress. It will be completed by May and tested by May of '25. And then the installation of the rest of the elementary schools, we would use future Capitol Outlay projects or operating budget if things improve with, with finances. Additions, this is a, it's an addition and a subtraction at the same time, but I, the addition would be an Account Clerk One or a Clerical Assistant. I have a retirement coming up with my secretarial staff, and then adding $5,000 for the Green Team Garden upgrades and upkeep to maintain our sustainability here at the district. Both of those total 69,500. As far as reductions, again, the Senior Account Clerk is retiring, and the net savings by hiring a, oh geez, I lost my train of thought, hiring a clerical or a Account Clerk One, the net savings is $103,600. As far as the budget, impact, total addition 69.5, reductions 103.6 with a net reduction of $34,100. And that is all I have. Does anyone have any questions?
Questions for Nick?
When do we get to try these doodle sticks?
You know, we do have sub-openings. I don't want Ellen to steal all the thunder, we do have, you can try it at any time, but no, really, it's, it's, one of the challenges we had is, is the bathrooms, they're all tiled, and the corners and getting behind the fixtures wasn't so good before because who wants to crawl down around on their hands and knees and do that? And these really improved our cleanliness and disinfection, so. They're expensive, but very worth it.
I have a more serious question, which is, you know, we've discussed several times the issue with vaping.
Yes.
From a facilities point of view, is there anything we can or should be doing to decrease that or monitor it or reduce it?
Well, that would be something that we, we could talk about. It, it would be an expenditure, they do make vape detectors that do work.
And the, we actually are getting some funding from a grant that Albany, it's funneling through Albany County, and we're getting funding. The challenge with the vape detectors is that some schools have implemented, some of them in the bathrooms, and they alert you, but then you have to figure out who's vaping in the bathrooms because there's multiple kids in there at one time, and you, so it's not, it sounds good that yes, you're detecting, you're, it's text, it alerts you, but you don't necessarily, unless you, now, you, there's one person, you can look on the camera, see if they went in, what time, I mean, it's a somewhat cumbersome task, so it's not, it doesn't really solve the problem of vaping in the bathrooms.
It lets you know that they are.
I mean, where's the, the new fire alarm system, kids think those are vaping detectors that weren't, the ones that were. But they do make vape detectors that are effective, we do have some grant money coming, we could look at that, although I, it's not a huge deterrent to vaping in the bathrooms.
You know, it, the technology's improving, they have one that, they, they keep trying to sell it to me, like literally every day. You know, it, it will tell you if there's a fight in there because it can tell the sound, it'll tell you if you're vaping, and it can also tell you if something's on fire in there, for an example. But, you know, again, as Jody said, first round on this, we did have some connectivity issues which Erin and her folks have resolved, and now it could be done using Wi-Fi, they wouldn't be, have to be hardwired, so.
Other questions for Nick?
Okay.
Catherine?
I know we spent a bunch of time earlier this year on heat and mitigation, on things preparing on the solar film. Just going back, so you're recommending renting this year, and could you just refresh my memory, because I do, I'm just not remembering the details of either the cost or the, yeah, if you could just unpack that, just, just remind me for two minutes, like, the, the cost benefit renting versus?
Okay, so this past year, in June, we had a heat wave, literally, and it just so happened to be, it was at test time at the high school. So our testing area was gym B, the lower gym, and the cafeteria. We, in a, in a hurry, were able to rent and connect five units from a local vendor at a cost of $23,000 and change.
Yeah.
Okay, so we, we were able to do that, it was much appreciated. The reason we talked about this once was, if we were to buy them, it was, I can't remember exactly, it was $136.5 to buy them. And we had discussion in the ECP that, geez, we may not need them. Will we ever need them? Because they're almost specific to those two locations. That exact tonnage, if we were to buy them, you know, it would be specific to the cafeteria. Would it be more cost-effective to put a coil and make a permanent air conditioning in the cafeteria? So I think one of the board members brought up that, geez, for $134, we could rent them five times theoretically. And then we talked that we may not need them.
Right, right.
You know, that was a, in a, hopefully it was an anomaly at test time, you know, that doesn't alleviate our, our high temperature conditions in the classrooms and everything. That was specific to our test period.
Got it. And did I hear you correctly that these could be deployed, you know, not only in those two locations? Did you mention that this evening?
I did. What I, what I'm saying for that is, there, that would be to replicate what we did last June. We, that $25,000 budget line is if we had a, a situation where we needed it somewhere else, we wouldn't have to, I could pick and choose what size unit, and it would obviously cost less.
Right.
But to replicate, we felt comfortable carrying $25,000 just for escalation because it was 23 and change last time.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Thanks, Nick.
All right, so a lot of information, a lot of things to digest over the course of the evening. Thank you for your patience, thank you for your questions, thank you to the directors of the district really pulling together, pulling their presentations together, really looking at their budgets to bring things in line to meet some of the challenges. I think you saw some of those reductions and some of those creative solutions articulated tonight, which brings us to, to the end of our session tonight. Quick overview, we started the evening at roughly $117.5 million in expenditures, on the revenue side, $111.2 million. The initial gap when we started, the presentation was $6.3 million. We had an increase, a proposed increase of $40,500 for human resources scanning of employee records, transportation, reduction of salary-infringe benefits of five drivers and three attendants for roughly $490,000. Erin Shevers proposed a reduction of roughly $295,000, and Operations and Maintenance proposed a reduction of $34,000, which shrunk that gap by roughly $800,000, making a tax increase of, a proposed levy increase today at 7.57%. So we shaved over, just over a point in our discussions today. Again, I want to highlight that that 5.5 million does not include the pilot revenue being incorporated, which we'll include in the slide deck next week. That'll cut an additional $3.4, $3.5 million. There are some additional changes going to be proposed over the next several sessions, some additions, some reductions. We're making some headway, but again, what I, what I can see in the distance is the tax levy increase is still going to be roughly around 3%, maybe a touch higher or lower compared to the 1.1% allowable levy increase that we talked about when we first started. Some housekeeping matters, important ones, but there are two Board of Education seats open that voters will be selecting on May 20th. The current seats, two seats open currently occupied by Robert Teigen and John Wallston, they're for three-year terms, expiring June 30th, 2028. Petitions are available, they were made, first available on February 20th from the District Clerk and the District Office. All petitions are due by April 20th at 5:00. In order to be a successful petition, 61 signatures need to be included on, on those petitions, want to highlight that. Quick calendar in terms of where, where we go from here. February 26th, tonight is our first presentation, our next presentation, including, again, I'll, I'll go back, do a little bit of recap, incorporate some of the changes that we talked about, give you hopefully a little bit more firmer picture that I'm not talking in innuendo and, and estimates. March 5th, we will also have the athletics by the Athletic Director Lynn Keys and the Instruction Programs by Dr. Hurst. March 19th, we'll have food service, general discussion, we'll do some decisions and discussions on the options the Board is considering in terms of additions, reductions, any bus proposition language, any... terms of additions, reductions, any bus proposition language, any capital reserve language, any additional propositions it wants to consider. Right now, March nineteenth is slated as the tentative adoption of all of that information. Given the way the calendar falls, April second provides sort of a cushion meeting for the Board. If it wants some additional discussion or is looking for some additional information, we could adopt the budget and some of those propositions by April second, although we will do our research in terms of the bus prop to make sure that we finalize that date compared to the other date. May fifteenth is the scheduled public hearing on the proposed budget. May twenty...
I think those are a couple type, I think it's supposed to be May seventh, May fourteenth, May twenty?
Sorry, yeah, May, right, May twentieth is the budget vote, and the candidates ninth has to be a little earlier, on the fourteenth.
And the seventh is the...
And the seventh is the public hearing. We'll up that slate on the next time, I apologize. And I think that's it. So I'm happy to answer. Any additional questions on any of the presentations tonight, mine or...
Catherine has a question.
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. On the transportation budget, going back a little bit, did I catch correctly that the reduction in drivers, is a reduction for drivers budgeted, however they are not filled positions at this time?
That's correct.
So this is, so we're reducing the budget, we're not going to hire them, there's nobody retiring, being let go or anything like that.
There's no layoffs, these are just, ideally, the Transportation would like to have seventy bus routes.
Right.
Gets kids in there, less buses, more routes, quicker drive times in and out. Despite its best efforts, Marketplace, we've only been able to get fifty, fifty-three, fifty-five drivers. So year over year, we're carrying that really wish we could get here, but it's driving other cost centers and revenue streams. So we do not anticipate in '25, '26 is going to be different than '24, '25. Let's try to minimize any tax levy increase and go from there. So those are why we're reducing those positions.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Appreciate that. Any other questions for John?
Thanks for your words, John.
Next, item five, recognition of public comment. If we have any visitors who would like to address the Board on an agenda item, now would be the time to come to the microphone. Item six, action items. A, finance action items. It is recommended by the Superintendent at the Board of Education approve the following finance action item number one.
Subwoofer.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended by the Superintendent at the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items one through six.
Subwoofer.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? C, support personnel action items. It is recommended by the Superintendent at the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items one and two.
Subwoofer.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? D, other action items. It is recommended by the Superintendent at the Board of Education approve the following action items one and two. Subway.
Subwoofer.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Item seven, recognition of public comment on a non-agenda item. If we have any visitors who would like to address the Board on a non-agenda item, now would be the time to come to the Item eight, future meetings and events. Wednesday, March fifth, is our next board meeting here at the high school. Anticipating executive session at six and reconvening to open session at seven. Monday, March tenth, we have a policy committee meeting here at the high school at six o'clock. And then our meeting after that is on Wednesday, March nineteenth. Again, anticipating executive session at six and reconvening to open session at seven. So again, our next meeting is next week, so don't get confused. And we'll see you all then. Seeing no delay back into executive session, could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Subwoofer.
All in favor?
Right.
Meeting adjourned.